So we call the planning board meeting to order for Monday, March 9th. It's actually 5:03 PM. Okay. All right. So what do we have for new business? Anything right now besides, I don't know, 5:30 and 5:45? We have some people coming in.
We want to do the, we have to vote on the A and Rs from January.
Okay.
Do you want to do the minutes first and that will make more sense?
We can do the minutes first.
When they do the A and Rs. So for the January, I've already marked your copies, but I had January 13th on the first page. It should say the 27th. And this is the one where those A and Rs were approved, so it would give you a reference on page two as to, except for Bob.
Who is Jim Healy?
Gentlemen, the House wants to order Dollar General.
Okay. Why are we listed as others, though?
Why what?
Why would have Jim Healy listed as others?
On the January one?
Yeah. Well, I just wonder why we have like as members and others.
Well, he had, he was bringing up on page three, Dollar General. He's bringing up an issue he had with.
But I guess when I think of others, I think of Ken. Because it lists the board members, and then others, and then people that are absent. So I guess I think, I think of others, I think of Ken as others.
I would agree with that, except for I would add Mr. Healy, because he's coming, just like we have, we have Peter Lavanti coming before us later on with questions.
But I guess, I guess the point I'm making, they're coming before the board. They're not part of the board.
Correct. So that's others in attendance.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does now if you, if you put it that way, yes. Since I look at others, I'm thinking because word said, it says members, others, absent. So I'm thinking this word is, that's all.
I'll make a motion to approve the Monday, January 27th meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Founding right along. Now, Jim, you and I have to recuse ourselves from this one, because we weren't there.
Abstain.
Abstain. Sorry. Abstain.
So can the two of us?
So we have to wait for Rob.
We'll wait for Rob.
Okay, so let's come. Now, we should vote on the A and Rs for Carver State, which would be from your January minutes. On page two. We just need a motion to.
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the A and Rs that were presented.
We have to do them individually.
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R.
For?
That was submitted on January 27th for Thaddeus Sattwicky. Okay?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'm abstaining, because I recused.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R that was submitted on January 27th for William Porter.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'll abstain.
Founding right along.
Abstain.
Yeah. You want to do the billing while we're waiting?
Might as well. We have time.
Okay, let me get those out. One, two, three, four. Rob doesn't get them.
Rob doesn't get them?
Rob doesn't get them.
Oh. I thought you said Bob. Oh, this bill.
Okay. So what you have on the second, that's all, the first page is all of the billing. And we decided at the January meeting to bill Borrego and Raymond Beaujolais, which are on the second page there. So attached to this first page are the billings with the, the only thing I can't account for yet on Borrego Solar is the escrow amount, including interest. So I have, I have everything from Kathy, and everything's in this bill except for that amount. And what I have here is copies of a memo for Glenn to sign, asking Steve Nally to release the $10,000 plus interest, and then we'll know how much, and Kathy can go ahead and do that. So we need, we need two things, because the January minutes said I would come back with the billing. And I'm already starting to lose my voice. So the, we need to approve the billing pending the dollar amount for the $10,000 plus escrow interest.
But we've got the subtotal.
There's no, yeah, $9,000 and.
65.
Yeah, so we're going to owe them.
A little bit.
A little bit.
We have the actual amount we're billing them for, so.
So if I may, the subtotal is a $9,765.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
Correct.
That's what comes out of that $10,000.
Right.
Plus interest.
Right.
So when will we have that?
Well, we've got the memo here for Glenn to sign. We should do a motion for Glenn to sign the memo to Steve Nally releasing the $10,000 for Borrego.
Well, the $10,000 doesn't get released.
Pardon?
How much did we take in escrow?
$10,000.
$10,000.
So, so, so how does that get released?
So it's in an account now?
It's, it's collecting interest in an account.
So now that we're going to bill them, and we're closing it out, that money's got to be released so they can, that can be paid to the town. Then what's left over would be sent back to Borrego.
Right.
Can I read the letter that Glenn's sending?
There's two copies there.
Yeah, I agree. The, the letter, I don't think is right. I think it should say, "Release balance."
Correct. That's where I was getting at. We're stating we're going to release $10,000, which makes it sound like we're giving them back the full $10,000.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yep.
And we don't know what that is until the math is done with the interest.
Right. And that won't get done until he gets that memo.
Okay.
Can we amend that letter? Any handwriting?
Yeah. I don't see why not. Because it was, it's the draft I'm presenting, and you just have to approve, you can say the draft as amended.
Well, Glenn's not going to sign it tonight.
You won't be able to.
You won't be able to.
He'll amend it.
If we crossed out that $10,000 and, "Please release the balance," handbroke.
Who knows, that's a weird word.
Well, why don't we ask Mr. Nally what the letter should actually say? Just to see what no one, it needs to say for us to obtain the monies.
Well, all we got to say, no, all we got to say is, "Release the balance due to Borrego less, less than $9,000."
Okay. Well, I don't know if you want to say, "Reduce, release the balance due," you'd probably have to specify a little more, "out of the $10,000 held in escrow." You want to say that? Because otherwise, it might sound like there's something.
Let's do it this way.
We can put the exact amount, unless we, we just wait till the exact amount from Kathy, what the escrow is.
Well, it would come from Steve, yeah. But then it would have to be on a specific day. We cut it off on a specific day. We can't hold on to it for another two weeks after that.
So it's basically $234.48 plus interest. That's what we'd be releasing.
Um, okay.
Yeah.
But all Steve is doing is closing out the escrow account.
Right. So, right, from my understanding, so the way I read this, is that the planning board gave authorization to put the money in account.
Correct.
We need to get authorization to take the money out of the account.
Steve does, from us.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. So that's what I'm reading here, is that we're giving Steve authorization to now take that money from the account.
Right. And then we credit it in the, I mean, I, I don't know. Do you want to change the wording? It's up to you.
Well, that's what I was just saying, is just ask Steve what it should actually say. I'm sure he's been through it before.
Okay.
To see exactly what it should be written.
Have these all been paid?
No, they haven't all been paid. That's why we're billing.
Well, actually, I would imagine the Italian bond peer review was paid.
Well, that was part of the $10,000.
PVPC has been paid.
Oh, are you saying that we pay them?
Yes.
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 So then all we should be asking for is to release the $234.48.
But we don't know for sure if that's.
Plus interest.
We don't know.
That's all that should be left in there.
Well, do you know how much he got for interest?
That's why I said plus interest.
Okay. Okay.
Now we should.
You're just subtracting the 10th of the 9, you have $765.52 from that.
Correct.
$10,000. So how much are you calling it? $200?
$34.48.
So we would need a check cut to at the same time, which Steve would do.
That's why I say, "Please release to Borrego," which would, which would mean he would write a check out.
Okay. So how do you want to word that?
I guess I'm still stuck on that we had to give permission to Steve to put the money, the planning board had to do that, to give it, to open an account for that money.
Right.
So I read this as saying that we're giving them authorization to close that account.
Right.
It says, "Please release the $10,000 plus interest." It doesn't say, "Release it to Borrego." It says, "held in escrow from Borrego," or affected March 9th. So it doesn't say that it's being released to them. It just says that we're releasing the money, because that bank account's got to be closed.
Right. So Jim, you're saying, but we should say, "Release to whom?"
To Borrego. Please release the, the balance of the $234.
But, okay, so, but what I'm saying is.
So that you're taking care of two things. That only takes care of one thing.
But that account isn't just ours. That has Borrego's name on it, too, I would imagine, because it's held in escrow for that.
I don't know. I never saw it.
Well, Steve will know how to do that.
Yeah, well, okay.
Just.
That's one, I'm just wondering if there's a certain way.
Do you want to make it simple? "Please release the balance."
I don't, yeah, it doesn't matter. I just want to make sure that's right, so that Steve says, "Okay, yeah, that's fine. Let's go, go forward." I want him to come back, saying, "No, it needs to say this." So.
So you're looking at it just from the banking end of the account?
Right.
And Jim, you're looking at it, trying to do two things at one time.
Because the money will be released, and then we'll subtract the money that is owed to the town.
What if we said, on there, the money released will be applied before monies due the planning board for services rendered?
Maybe the simple thing is, is to ask Steve Nally for a tally of the account, and has everything been paid to date, and what the balance is that's left in the account.
But then the escrow amount's going to be different day by day. That'll give us a general of the escrow.
But that way, we know that these have indeed been paid to the people that are due, and then we've got somewhat of a close total, just as Jim came up with the two.
Okay.
Two 48.34, two 34.48. And Steve will have some interest in there, and we ask him at the next meeting to release it.
It's compounded daily, though. He's got to write, he's got to, it's got to read vaguely, so that he could calculate it the day he signs, the day he cuts the check.
Right. And I'm wondering, you know, well, if this, if this first amount of 85.32 is paid on July 6th, and Italian bond was paid on August 8th.
If it came out of that money?
No, not if it came out of the money. But how did it come out? And, okay, so there was $10,000 minus 85.
As far as the compounding.
So there's $9,015.
Don't want to get into that.
I know, I know.
Let Steve figure it out.
Exactly. I don't want to get into that.
Okay. So I'm, I'll ask Steve Nally for an accounting of the $10,000 held in escrow.
The town may have paid all these bills.
To determine.
Without taking money out of the escrow.
What needs to be paid.
Which is possible, too. And now the escrow replenishes the town.
Well, this way, we get verification one way or another from Steve.
Absolutely, I agree.
Right. Okay.
I agree there.
Okay. That takes care of Borrego. Now, the other one is Beaujolais.
And that seems simple enough. We just send that gentleman an invoice.
Right.
Correct?
Correct. But we need a motion. Because we're making a decision.
I'll make a motion to send an invoice to Mr. Raymond Beaujolais. You must have the address, Kendall Street, right? Or Chickaby Street?
I don't have it on the listing.
Okay.
Well, unless you want to say what it is for. An oversized barn?
Send an invoice to Mr. Beaujolais regarding the site plan approval and subsequent fees involved, for a total of $1,137.53.
Okay. Let's go over that again. Or, to send an invoice to Mr. Raymond Beaujolais for.
The site plan approval for an oversized barn.
Well, all the information should be in there, too, with exactly what it was for, an oversized barn, located, such and such.
Right. We need the address. We just don't have that right now.
I might. See if I can get to this. He was on. But he was, I'm trying, where was, where is he, where is his barn?
It was either Kendall Street or Chickaby Street.
Oh, I got Kendall Street, Beaujolais. August of 2019.
Oh, that's, okay.
Okay, 185 Kendall Street, Granby.
Okay. Mr. Beaujolais, 185 Kendall, for an oversized barn, oversized barn, site plan approval.
For a site plan for an oversized barn, plus.
All the subsequent fees incurred by the town of Granby.
Totally, in the amount of.
So total amount due, $1,137.53. That's the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
For a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
This is yours? Okay. And I did have a question on, on billing the others. And Jim, back in the January meeting, we had, we had proposed we wait until all the projects were done before we build the others. But that may be years down the road?
Which one was it now?
Well, all the other ones on the front here. You've got Dickinsons, the amendment, you've got Red Rock Solar, you've got Dollar General, and the Dollar General sign. There are some pieces I don't have on each of them. Specifically, the square footage on some of them, because.
Well, if the sign's done, that's all.
Dollar General.
Yeah.
Yep.
But I'm wondering if Dollar General may have to come back with an amendment to their plans, if they're going to be doing something different with the drainage. I don't think we're quite ready to.
Two different, two different permits.
Yeah, that would be.
No, no, I'm talking Dollar General themselves, not the sign.
You're talking LaScottie Development. But that would be separate from the approval, the site plan approval from what's there. We approved it, everything was okay. Everything's signed. Now this will be something else that came.
Aye.
So this will close this out. They, too, have some money in escrow. $9,900.
What's the public hearing notice and notice to voters? So we don't have everything for them yet?
I don't have the dollar amounts from Kathy, because we had agreed the last time to wait until everything's done. But if you want to go ahead and bill them, I'll get all the numbers from Kathy. And the other things I don't have are on Granby Solar, Dickinson Farms, the fee schedule for the amended amendment to the site plan is $100 plus 10 cents a square foot, per square foot of the structures. What's the square footage?
We're going to have to go back and look at the part that was amended. That's the only thing you can charge for, not the whole thing. Right?
All right.
Well, they, yeah, I'm not sure. They shifted some, but that doesn't change the size.
Well, they went to a tracking system, right? The other ones, they went to a tracking.
That's correct.
And they, but they went down to, I thought, less panels, didn't they, too?
Well, I can check into what.
They did.
What we billed them the first time around, a couple of years ago.
Did we collect a, a fee for the escrow for the modification?
No.
Okay.
So if we, okay, I'll check into what was billed for the original plan, and then I'll come back with that and any, what they say are the differences between the old plan and the new plan. If it's just changing the type or what have you, we may not even need to do that. We just have to do the charges for the public hearing and $100, I guess. Now, Red Rock Solar has an escrow, $1,600, and that's another one, square foot of the structures.
Well, I'm not so sure that Red Rock's going to be able to build as they had presented. Now with the.
Revised.
The new bylaws.
So that, then that should be closed out at this point.
Right. It's, was based on the other plan, not what, not what they, if they, they'll have to come back with an amended plan if they're going to do something different.
The whole thing's got to start over?
Yep.
Right. So.
Right, Bob?
I, I think so. I, well, the, I don't know how these new bylaws affect that particular.
But the new bylaws took effect on the date of the special town meeting, October. But they hadn't started anything yet? They hadn't started any building or anything?
But I think, I think that they were, if I remember correctly, they were.
Approved during the moratorium.
Correct.
So they're subject to any changes.
Right. Thank you.
Because we all finished.
So we've got all the property line setbacks?
Yep.
So I would think they could come forward with amended, because they already have certain things in place. Why couldn't they come through, and now they got to come through and meet the new bylaws? So they're just amending their current plan to meet the new bylaws. Because the permit, it was approved and expired.
It couldn't proceed?
Well, they couldn't proceed because they had to wait, because of the moratorium. So now that the moratorium's over, and the new bylaws are in place, at this point, they could proceed, if they wish to do so.
Yep.
They just have to.
Complicate.
The new bylaws.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Yeah.
It's going to be less.
But we still need a square footage.
Correct. They still have to provide that.
Right.
Yep. So, and I, if somebody else can look into that, that would be great, at the plans that we have.
Well, my question to them would be, are they moving forward? If not, then is it billing for?
I, I, this is based on what we approved.
Right.
So we're billing them for what we approved.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. That's what I'm saying, so we.
Okay. I just need, I need to get in some of the rest of the numbers. The square footage has to be, to figure out.
Well, but what I'm saying is, the square footage may have, has changed, because.
It doesn't matter, though.
That doesn't matter.
You still have to fill in for what they, what they presented the first time around.
And if I remember correctly, there was just a pin in the ground or something. So I don't know how you're going to get square footage out of that. It's another thing we need to look at.
Well, there would have been that, those, as you say, pins, but there were also, would have been some concrete pads for operating equipment.
Can you look into that and figure out the square footage?
Yeah, if somebody can get me the, the plans.
We should have my file, right?
Pardon?
It should be.
We should have my file.
On file here somewhere, yes, and electronically, you should have them.
Okay.
Let me know if you don't.
If you, if you have them electronically, send them to me, please.
Yes, I remember seeing the pictures of the actual pin, assuming it's that, if I remember, they billed them around Red Rock, but they had pictures of what the actual pin was and the size was and...
Okay, maybe the building inspector can tell us as well.
He may have it, yeah.
Okay, so I will get these in a final form for the next time around.
Thank you.
And after you hear from Natalie about the other one, that'll help you put them in the final form, I would think.
Right.
Based on what he's gonna require.
Danny, could you sign in, please?
Right here.
And for Borrego, we're all set. That could be, both need to build out for the sign and the work.
Yeah, Borrego, Bojolai, we're all set.
Yeah.
Bojolai. So we need the A and R now. We are behind schedule.
See that? We were ahead of schedule before, now we're behind.
We're only behind by four minutes, so...
I think we started at five oh four, so we're right ahead. All right. Is this the rule?
No.
No?
Frederick Row.
Oh, Row, oh, see, I didn't see Row there.
Danny.
Okay.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
What's happening? Come right up front, Dan.
What you got?
I have my property to start reading. We have that, we will have that file.
It's getting lost in the papers already.
Right up top.
Two separate articles, this one here, this one, and this little one. We're making all one.
So going from three to one.
Right.
And your frontage is?
One ninety-nine point nine-four.
Yep. And I have it right away here. Coming this way.
With the locus?
I don't see a locus. It's in the D.
Where's, who did this?
Anderson Associates.
We'll get kicked back at the...
See, originally, I bought this property, this piece, to the property company. To get access to it.
So without the locus on it, the registry will kick it back, though.
So, so what you're showing us is fine?
Yeah.
We don't have an issue with it? But they're supposed to show the locus on it with the surrounding?
Oh, really?
Yeah. So...
What's the locus of that?
It's a small map that defines the area of where this property is located. Yeah. So get him to do that and come back.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it. There's, everything else is fine, it's just a...
Call it locust?
Locust.
You know it is.
L O C U S.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
And we'll need a check the next time when you're coming?
Yeah, I have it now, I mean...
Hang on to it.
So when do you meet again?
Let's, let's, what's the, what's the, you have a pressing issue with this to get it done sooner rather than...
Well, no, it's just, he didn't wanna give it done. I thought, he had told me it was July first, but now it's January that he told me.
Oh, the surveyor?
The town, no, the town, the town, oh. The, the tax...
Oh, you're trying to get it done for tax purposes, is what you're...
Yeah, right. Because another thing is, the original survey came out to eleven point something acres. This one here comes out to, same, same property, it's up to nine something.
Is that, any of that agricultural?
It was all agricultural, it was all agricultural. Played both the house and the, my grandpa had a farm here, it was planted.
But it's still classified as agricultural?
I don't know.
By the taxes, that's gonna be a problem there.
How so?
I think it's residential.
That doesn't mean it's sixty-one A.
Well, that's not for us to argue the...
No, no.
It's not.
The size...
No, but I mean, I've been paying taxes...
He's just curious, is why it's different.
Yeah, I've been paying taxes on eleven point something acres, you know, for thirty-five years.
And now it's nine something?
Yeah. You know?
I see the rate's shrinking.
Something's happening.
When's our, when's our next meeting?
March twenty-third, two weeks.
Sorry. We sign it, and it goes up to Northampton, they kick it.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I don't have to bring it up there?
You'll bring it up there, but they'll still kick it if it doesn't have the locus.
That's right, that's what they want on it.
Okay, Danny.
And there's a title block here for us to sign?
Yeah, you can.
No, over to the left here? Is it on this side, ready?
No.
No?
No. Needs a title block, too.
For five, for five signatures.
Yeah, for five signatures?
Yeah.
He should know that, that guy, I don't know.
I'm surprised they sent it out with even, with either one of them.
Got the Mylar's rights?
Yeah, two of those.
Four of those.
Sorry, Dan.
Sorry.
Other than that, I don't see any reason why we bring it back.
Everything else is...
Hold on, approve it and sign up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you did. They'll warn me about that.
I'm good like that. Yeah, it didn't have anything on there.
No.
That was pretty...
Pretty sparse. A few minutes.
It says five forty-five, it's only five forty-one.
Although we could take other early...
Yeah, that's not a hearing, right? It's on the agenda.
We're ahead of schedule, just like that, so...
Hello.
Hi.
Hello again. Just to remind you, I'm Heather Reynolds Bonzi, I haven't had the opportunity to meet you before, and told you.
Ken, come in.
Oh, yes. I'm excited with that, too. So I was here on your town, and I shared a plan, and I think it was all an email to everyone about a, and I have copies here, if you're interested. About starting a business, in an event business. So I'm coming to seek in the special permit.
Okay, do you do? Is that what you sent us? Okay.
Yes, it's the same thing.
Yep. Those are colored cards.
I saw the color last time.
No, no, no.
So you'd asked me to do a couple of things. One of them was, get those, you know, to, via Kathy Leonard. And I did some research on the parking as well. Parking's not in there, but I can certainly email it to all of you. Making, I made a few assumptions. If my maximum number of people at an event is a hundred and fifty, I would need seventy-five spaces. That's probably pretty generous. That's assuming only two people per vehicle. And standard spaces being nine feet by eighteen feet, that would be twenty-two cars within it and a length of two hundred feet. And that would be back-to-back. I also did some research on handicap parking. And I would need six handicap spaces, five plus one van, and I would want these located near the tent. So, just to refresh everyone's memory, everything that would come in would come out, so there are no permanent structures. Every, including the facilities, would be on a trailer, to be trellered in and out. So it's really a part-time, seasonal business that I'm looking to start on Harris Street. It also is really rich in history, the property itself. The home on the property dates back to the late seventeen hundreds. It was owned by Richard Sher, who was a curator of the Stereotaph Museum. That was part of the underground railroad, and the report, which I'm sure that may resonate, was his stepdaughter. And she sold it to my parents, and that's where I grew up.
May I? I wasn't, I wasn't here, I wasn't here at the last meeting that you presented.
Yeah.
This is a zoning board of appeals. We can't even look at this.
Well, one thing that we had talked about was to get me within the bylaw, a bylaw of, let's see here. Of private museum, craft center, and art gallery. And that's why I brought in the history, because ultimately I wanna be using the home. And that's why treated by your plan, and it truly is rich in history. There are still butterflies surrounding the dining room that Richard Sher gathered from around the world. So I, that was the, the last direction that was given by the planning board, was to get a special permit.
Well, we couldn't figure out where it fit in the use schedule, use, of use, schedule of use regulations. And I, I, looking at everything you've got here, I can't see where, it's not really a private museum. And it's not an art gallery, 'cause it's only open seasonally, and it's not open all the time. It's only open when you have an event. And it's not a craft center, so it does quite fit in that one. And I couldn't quite get it to fit in anything, you're in residential. This part would be, and I said, part of the land was residential and part was sixty-one recreational, what have you there.
Well, it's surrounded that, we have four acres that are not, so that way.
But this would be in the residential.
Correct.
And I, I couldn't find anything that would fit for this that's already listed in the schedule of use, unless somebody else wants to take a crack at it.
Excuse me, well, I think that was one reason we wanted the full board here and, and Ken as well.
Well, I guess, you're gonna have to look at it, but there's nothing that states a private museum or art gallery, craft center has to be open year-round, though.
And I do wanna, there was one component that I do wanna just call out. It would be, I do wanna feature local artists and have those as focal pieces, statue, you know, throughout the, throughout the property as well. So I, and it truly isn't just a fit within it, that was always part of my plan. But I do, very strongly about this product. So if there's anything that I can do.
Do you wanna look at this, or? Ken, you've already looked at?
Yeah, so, I think that, when I was coming in with Jim, he mentioned that under your, Heather, what, what, what are you, what is the parcel being currently used for? I think that's a question. Is it just vacant land and there's currently no use?
Well, yeah, it's...
Okay, so, so your, your proposal was to have the event space to lead into some private museum and...
Yes, yes.
But the museum is the house, it's already there?
Correct.
Okay.
I think with, with there not being any specific pre-existing use, I don't think that the non-conformity section is applicable, because it's currently not being used as an event space, so... So, the zoning act and Granby's zoning bylaw, there's a, there's a section here. Under three point three four, which says, "Pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered when the special permit granting authority makes a finding as designated by the bylaw. That such change, extension, or alteration is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming uses to the neighborhood." Which basically says that the special permit granting authority, if they were to make a finding, if you were currently using it as an event space, and were altering it to include a new use, you would have to go before that authority. And the finding by that board or that authority would be that it's not substantially more detrimental than its current use. However, with it being vacant and not currently being used for anything...
Well, they live there.
Other than a residential space.
Yeah, it's rented right now.
So, so someone lives there. I don't think that there is, as, as Lillian suggested, I don't think that that specific use is applicable here, considering that is not the, the use that is proposed for right now. In your future plans, you probably would need to go before the board if you were going to now include...
Museum.
A museum. But since, what I'm assuming is the, is your five-year plan, or whatever, you know, however long your timeframe is, is that you would be using, you know, the, the profits that you would be earning from having this as an event space to, you know, preserve the home to be used as a museum and to curate art and have that as part of your plan. I do think that you'd have to address this particular application or this particular proposal as a bylaw amendment to look at that specific use and introduce it as a new use to your zoning bylaw.
But that couldn't be done before the special October meeting, town meeting, the town has to vote on that, so...
Correct, a bylaw amendment requires a town vote.
With all the advertising and the public hearings you have to have, with all the changes and everything else, it takes a long time to get that done.
Ask you a question. How does, so this is, this would be a place of an assembly. So how does, let's say, a farm do that?
Do what?
Does a farmer have a function like that?
Has...
You have, what's a farm? Red Fire Farm, how they, how they do it? They have functions up there, gatherings?
Um, I'd have to look under agricultural. When you got under agricultural, they're very beginning. Farm, farm business, commercial, I mean, that might file, might fall under a farm business. I think, I'm sure Red Fire Farm falls under a farm business, with their, you know, selling and their picking and everything else they're having there. And that's part of their retail is having events. That's the way I see it, unless somebody sees it differently.
I was just bringing the point up, that's all.
The problem is, it's, it's, this is in residential, so it's not fitting into anything we have.
Yeah, I understand that, that's why I brought it up.
You know, it doesn't help that it's, you know, it's protected within the, I mean, when you ask them why, it's, we really don't have any neighbors, they're all across the street. I would say eighty percent of whom I've already discussed my dream with. I would say eighty percent of whom I've already discussed my dream with.
A bed and breakfast is allowed.
That is something that we've entertained the idea, but right now I need to be able to generate enough revenue to be able to address the needs of the house, because I do need to do updates before I would even touch or change that. I mean, I'm open to anything that would preserve that property as well as generate income. I mean, I am, I was married there, so I know that events are possible there. And we posted, my cousin was married there as well. So it's a beautiful area that I'd love other people to go through and experience. It's kind of a little hidden gem. But I needed a lot of capital to be able to get it up and running for bed and breakfast.
Now here it says, under residential, public library or museum, special permit. Actually, it says site plan approval, not a special permit.
Which number are you looking at? Number bylaw. Number, it says on the left-hand side, if you have the latest copy.
A private museum should be site plan approval.
Under residential.
Yeah, I didn't see it under residential.
Well, are you talking about private museum? Is that the one you're reading?
It doesn't say private museum. It just says, public library, museum.
Public library, museum. Three point four point nine.
Okay, I don't have that.
You don't have the latest one, do you?
No, I don't. It's in Florida.
But it's not open all the time.
It doesn't define that. It has to, existing buildings. It doesn't, most museums aren't open all the time.
But there's, but what's the museum part? The fact that it's in...
Well, that's, that's...
That's not what, what, correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, but what you're focusing on right now is having events there, not actually opening up the house to people going through to look at a museum.
My, my, Rick, however I need to do it, I just need the direction to be able to come up with this, with whatever the town is requiring, so that I can move forward. That, that's my hope. The most accessible way for this to become a viable business for all the research that I've done would be events, because I can bring everything in and bring it back out. So that's really what I'm looking to do. When I have enough income, then I can be updating the home, which I wanted to use as an additional component for every event, and ultimately have the entire home available to rent. So as per the...
Yeah, so I don't quite think it would fit right now with what she's doing.
So, right, so what we're looking at, Heather, right now is we're looking at, this only district is residential.
Yeah.
And we're trying to fit what you're telling us into one of the categories where it would be allowed.
Everybody that's coming in, if they could please sign in on the sign-in sheet, that would be great.
I wasn't paying attention.
There's certain categories here that you say you're going to be doing at some point. A bed and breakfast, a museum.
And I was just been wanting to be as transparent as possible to my, my actual initial goals.
I guess until we have more of a definitive...
Of what she's...
Proposal. There's not much we can do right now.
But I guess I believe guidance as to the next step that you need me to take to make. I just am not sure what that is, which is why...
She doesn't know where she fits it, doesn't she?
I know.
She doesn't know what to do.
Right, and I don't know how we necessarily help.
It almost falls under services, but that's not allowed in residential. I mean, we could, it could be bunched under services.
What do you have that?
But it, uh...
There's no way together.
Right under retail and services. One, two, three, four. But services are not allowed in residential, so.
Is there a way that I could, you know?
There's no exceptions to that. It's, it's the bylaw. We'd have to change the bylaw. And that's another, wait another year, that sort of thing. So we're trying to fit it into what we've got.
Understood.
I'm not seeing anything that...
Outdoor display of goods and wares. It almost falls into that, but that's still not allowed. Not any of these. Gee, if you were radioactive waste, we could fit you in somewhere.
Not up there, though.
No, that's still a no, though. Oh, that's here. Let's just find something that has a yes here. Home occupation.
I see they're talking about existing lawn.
Use of a portion of a dwelling, a portion of a dwelling or accessory. Antique shop, gift shop, hobby shop. Yeah, see, it's specific there. No, nothing. I can't see anything that fits. Here, well.
Is the new version online?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to recommend that you go back and look at it. There's, there's, there's nothing in here to...
So if I can't fit within a bylaw, what would the next step be? I mean, is that, is it just, is that no?
Change, no, you have to change the bylaw.
It's, it's no unless a bylaw is changed or added.
And a bylaw has to be written and sent to town meeting, two-thirds approval to change a bylaw or to add a bylaw, and then off to the attorney general for their approval.
Yeah, so it takes...
But the, the attorney general is really nothing more than wording, making sure the wording is correct.
Just rubber stamping it.
Making sure we're not restricting too much or something like that.
Who, who writes that? Is that something that I would propose?
No, we would, we would write that. But we would have public hearings, so if the public thought other things should be added, we would take that into consideration.
There, there is a process. And does the, to put something on town meeting, does that have to go to the select board?
Yes.
Okay.
Camping, is there any camping on the property?
Uh, I thought camping was not, but, um, we do, we have...
Commercial recreational camping for transit guests.
We've...
Well, that would be...
The last one, yeah.
I don't think that would fall in there. You'd have to have people camping there.
Why? Not people that are going to stay there overnight in tents or stuff?
Is camping as a, as an open opportunity?
Is that allowed in residential?
Special permit, zoning board of appeals probably.
Which one are you looking at? Are you looking at Jim's? Or are you looking at...? Do you have a number there? We have new ones. We have new ones.
We have an old one.
That everybody got a copy of.
We did?
Yeah. Kathy printed copies for everybody.
After the...
No, we've got them. They, Will handed them out at our last...
Oh, that's right. Yes, yes, yes. Yeah.
What are, what are not in here? Let's see, this is, we don't have the October one.
But that hasn't been changed, right? So it is, they say commercial recreational camping for transient guests.
Yeah, but it's, no offense, it's not up for us to find a fit. That's right.
No, no, right. I'm just, I'm just, I'm not trying to live with it. I'm just saying these are some of the options that you have where you could have...
She needs to go back and look.
Always got camping for transit.
But... Maybe rethink. You say you want to do these events to, to... Different than what that aspect is.
The resupplies down in Hampshire County in particular, there really isn't anything exactly like what I have. I mean, for the location, you know, I want to bring people to Granby. I want Granby to be on the, on the map for the Pioneer Valley for, you know, destinations for events. It's, I'm very passionate about this, this project. And I frankly done, I've done a lot of research and I've continued kept to come, just so that I can find out what my next step would be. So then being very transparent and open about it, because I want this to be something I could potentially hand down to my, my kids. It's, it's where I grew up. My parents loved this area, where they were, and...
I'm not necessarily opposed to it. It's just that there's no, you know, we have enforced the bylaws, and there's nothing in here that allows that in a residential area. So, and I'm not opposed of changing the bylaw or proposing a change to the bylaws to the town. Considering the change. Correct. And, and I think it might be, it might be a very good idea to do so. We're looking at some rezoning in town anyway. Maybe that's something we should take a look at. This isn't the first time.
No, it's not.
Somebody has come before us wanting to do events in town.
I think we're also looking, just looking at this, what we were talking about earlier, we should be able to define what an art gallery is or a craft center is. What is a craft center?
We don't, we don't have, I don't think that's defined, and our definitions are very lacking.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so, you know, something's that...
I mean, I'd love to hold craft there, too. You know, I don't want it, it doesn't necessarily need to be just for weddings. It could be a destination where people can gather and, and look for events there as well. And if I have to change my direction, I'm happy to do that also. Just wanted to make sure that the process continues to move forward. This is kind of my job right now.
It's kind of a what?
It's my job right now to make this...
Heather, what I would suggest then is, Mr. Trompke, that spoke to, maybe go back and look and see what you think may fit the best to your business and what you want to do.
And maybe you'll have to include an additional aspect that really is titled. This, this is all online?
I know I have it.
Okay, so, so...
I think this is what she presented. As I said, she has circled that, is that area. That's what she presented.
It's the only place that I seem to, to fit.
So you may want to think about adding something else in the beginning.
What changes that?
That's in the materials that you got?
Yeah.
And that is my question, what is a craft center?
You would have gotten it.
It would allow that.
But clearly, at this point in time, we will not talk in any sort of a craft center for this particular.
Oh, I would, I would pose those two questions.
Right, but the initial proposal.
Initial, no, correct, yeah.
So...
But if I need to plan it, I'm happy to do that. I just don't have the capital to do. I'm trying to be very logical and methodical about how I do it. So, in the event that I don't find a place in the bylaws that I fit, because I've kind of combed through them a number of times, I won't do that again, how do I make the proposal that it could be reviewed by the committee to have a additional change in the bylaws?
Well, it, no, okay.
Is that a formal request that I make, or?
To be honest with you, I'm not exactly sure. It's, it's probably one of two ways. It's, it's either a petition, sign with, with... What's that?
I think it is a petition, you have to have so many...
With so many signatures. And/or you could request the select board for us to, to review it. I, I don't know that that's necessarily true. When the, when the aspect of allowing business estate lots, or state business, business estate lots, those, I believe that was merely one person that came in and said, would you consider it?
And we just added it to our list that we were doing at the time.
That wasn't rezoning. This is rezoning. We weren't rezoning. I see, okay.
So I would, that would, so you're asking for a way to get it rezoned?
I just want to make sure. I don't know if you want me to rezone. I don't need to. I just want whatever permit that you're allowing to move forward. So I, I need the guidance from you to know what the best direction would be.
Want to play bent in?
I think, I think it is, it would require a bylaw amendment, whether or not that's addressing that specific type of use, and then adding it to your schedule of uses where you see it appropriate. More than likely, you'd, you'd find these types of uses with large pieces of land. And probably that's going to be in the residential zone.
So instead of rezoning, just add it to the schedule of uses, you're saying?
I'm not a big fan of even considering some spot zoning. I think we have to create a different classification.
Correct. It wouldn't be spots, you wouldn't be rezoning the parcel to allow it to fit. I think you need to address that, that specific type of use by adding language through however it would look like, to allow that type of use, and create a process for permitting that. And again, it would require a town meeting to approve that, two-thirds vote. So, you know, assuming the town meeting would approve language that could be conducive to your particular business. It, it is a process.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm moving forward in that.
It would be a bylaw. I, I would suggest a bylaw amendment, and that could happen multiple ways. The zoning act calls for...
Well, what would you need to amend on the bylaw? Or would it just be adding?
It would be adding. And you would add it, and you probably want to explore some language for that specific type of use and what you would require.
So you're talking about the schedule of use regulations, not a whole nother?
Right.
Maybe a whole nother bylaw with more particulars in it.
Possibly.
Maybe.
Yeah. And that, so you can do that via petition. Via, the planning board can elect to do that themselves. The select board, petitioning the select board and the select board informing the planning board to have a public hearing on that, as well as...
So petition or a letter?
That's fine, too. I mean...
So you're, you're saying Heather should send...
I think, I think a formal letter to the board requesting that. I've seen it done that way.
Requesting that a bylaw be amended or added?
Yeah, if, if, based on, on the, the members suggesting that, you know, it doesn't quite fit into the zoning bylaw, requesting to add that type of use or address that type of use within the bylaw.
Outdoor venues or events.
Yeah. There are examples throughout the Commonwealth for, for these types of uses. So, you know, if the board...
If you could get us some examples, that would help us facilitate it. And we can probably bundle it in with the rest of what we're proposing with the rezoning over, no other road, and maybe some on East Street as well. The West Mass property over there, or the, this, Westover's property. Westover, yeah. I think West Mass manages it. I didn't know that.
So my next step would be to address the letter to the planning board with this request to be up. Very, thank you.
Good luck, Heather.
Good luck. Okay, we're behind now. This is the... Glenn, this is the whole original folder, so please don't take anything out of that or you'll have Kathy to deal with.
I'm out of here.
But we need a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to.
Close it.
Close the regular meeting to convene for the public hearing in Rio.
Joint public hearing with the ZBA?
The joint public hearing with the ZBA, and then our meeting will reconvene at the end of that time.
So a second?
Second.
So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So.
Oh, CBA does not have a quorum.
We're missing one member, so we have to make a call.
So how do we handle this?
But you have to recuse yourself first, right?
Well, I was gonna wait until Glenn read the.
I still need to read this because it opens up the.
And then we'll have to postpone it, continue it, I mean, continue, is the right words?
Yes. So the town of Gramby, Board of Appeals, Planning Board, Gramby Board of Appeals along with the Gramby Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing on Monday, March 9th at 6:00 PM at One Library Lane, Old Carriage Library, top floor, to consider the petition of William Clark seeking a special permit under section 6.2 and site plan approval under section 6.3 of the Gramby zoning bylaws and applicable to section 3, Regulations 3.7.5, accessory uses regarding a private garage or stables exceeding 1,200 feet in area to be located at 198 Bachelor Street, Gramby, Mass, known as map 9-B-8. In addition, the above hearing, the Board of Appeals and Planning Board intend to conduct a public hearing following said hearings at time, at time permits. The notice is given to pursuit of chapter 40A and chapter 39, section 23B, Massachusetts General Laws.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I will recuse myself, I'm working for the Clarks.
Have the minutes note that. So.
How many members on the Board of Appeals?
Five members, and Kathy, Ron, and Chris, because she has ties with the Clark family, because she sent a letter to the select board to let them know that.
So, once it's at this point, because they don't have a.
Well, I just, I just want to make, you said you're missing one, don't you need a super majority?
So we need the three out of five for the super majority, correct?
No, super, four out of five.
Four out of five.
Four, alright, so, so we definitely don't.
So.
We don't have a choice.
The other, the other member that recused herself could, should still be able to vote based on necessity.
The rule of necessity.
Right.
But that still wouldn't give you enough, right?
Well, that, well, well, that and, and one more.
Yeah.
Right.
When do you think you could have a quorum?
I don't know, I'm supposed to have two more here this evening, one call me last minute.
But if the other member is, is, that's known, made known to her that she may be, where she can participate on a necessity, it is allowed, she just has to present why.
Okay.
So if it's troublesome for you to get the quorum together, so we can move forward with this.
So what we, what we're gonna propose doing is continuing the hearing, but we need a specific date to do that, otherwise we gotta re-advertise and start the process all over.
Our next. Well, you can't, Glenn, because you're on the select board.
I won't be here anyway, so our, we're looking if.
The 23rd.
23rd, we scheduled for our next planning board meeting, scheduled meeting.
And the first thing I did after this was much easier to get here.
Things happen.
So I think we should have at least four.
Well, next Monday, work for the applicant.
23rd.
March 23rd.
For the 23rd, I'm sorry.
Next Monday.
Following Monday. The 23rd.
So we need a motion.
Well, wait a minute, I want to make sure that we can get everybody here before we, before we push this out.
Well, they don't, they can speak to them, too, it's.
Are you gonna be here?
What's that?
You're gonna be here, anybody else?
So I'm trying to make it rather sooner rather than later, so that we do have a full.
I won't be here to six, the fall, next Monday, I will not be here.
Right, because he's got the select board.
What if we did it at four o'clock or five o'clock?
I, I won't be at the select board meeting either, I'm not, I'm not at town.
Oh, he's out of town?
Yes.
He won't even be around.
I'm away on next, next week.
Are you coming back?
I don't know.
It's tough sometimes to get in here by space, that's why most of our meetings are six thirty, because the other workers.
Well, we can make it.
We can do it.
We can do six thirty.
If there's a better time that works for your board, we can, we can always, we can do that.
If I may, there was a previous similar special permit that had the same thing happen, where the zoning board wasn't able to convene a quorum, however, the planning board.
We went ahead and did ours, and then.
Went ahead and did the special, did the site plan approval, which only requires a simple majority, the planning board can elect to do that if they want.
But then they would have to explain everything all over again for the ZBA.
It's still, it would still have to be continued, why don't we do that, at least that one step will be out of the way.
The 23rd.
No, no, right now, we'll, we can, we can review the plans and, and decide whether or not we're gonna approve them or not, and then we can continue, then we can continue the hearing for zoning Board of Appeals, so that they're the only ones that have to reveal it.
Okay, they just gotta present it twice. And we won't be able to hear their concerns at the same time they're hearing our, well, I mean, they'll, some of them will hear ours.
Yeah, if we have to be part of that meeting, why not just wait? Because the applicant has to come back regardless, the boards need to meet.
Well, because on the 23rd, we're saying on the, you're gonna be out.
No, he's gonna be out the week before.
The 16th.
So 23rd, I'll be here.
Okay.
So if we did it at 6:30, we would, he, there would be a better chance of all their members being here, or more.
We can do it at seven o'clock, I mean, if it's, because your board usually meets at seven, right?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, so.
6:45? We'll start ours later, because we'll have, we won't have very much before that.
No.
We'll have potentially.
Because that's what we gained from looking at it now, because we'd have to.
I think at six o'clock, we have the.
And technically, they're not here, they're here as, they're not here as a board.
Pardon?
They're not here as a board.
And?
And we are, so I'm just saying, so, I think we're better off just waiting.
Right.
What, are, are you waiting to get this completed, to pull the building permit?
Yes.
And?
And the window that I'm looking at to get up, to get in.
So you're looking to break ground ASAP?
What's that?
You're looking to break ground.
As soon as I can.
As soon as you can.
It's Monday. I mean, we, right, so, we, we could put out any date we want, it's, we know, we can bring on that, but it's more or less, the zoning Board of Appeals, they, they won't know because their other members aren't here, so they can't, they can speak for them, not everybody else.
I personally would like to hear what they say before I.
Okay, so that, that's fine, I, I get that piece, so, why don't, can we do it later this week, continue it later this week, hopefully they can pull a, a quorum together, they don't know, they don't know if they'll be able to pull a quorum together this week any more than they could on the 23rd, right?
Which, I'm, so we need, what, 48 hours of notice?
We don't need a notice, we're continuing.
Uh, for, for hearing, for, for a meeting, a meeting completely, just a meeting, we need a 24-hour notice, 24, 48.
No, not, not, not when you're doing a continuation.
Yes, for your meeting.
You still have to post an agenda.
You gotta post a meeting.
It has to be 48 hours.
Yeah.
So you could, the earliest you can schedule a meeting would be.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday.
Thursday?
Because we have to be.
Because you have to post tomorrow, just, just an agenda.
Yeah.
But you're continuing the public hearing, which is a requirement, it's just to post the agenda for that meeting.
It's a notification of a meeting, a public meeting.
Alright, so.
So.
Well, do you think Thursday would work for any of your group?
Trying to make two of us, again, I have a little bit of rest, we can drop.
Let's, let's do that, and if, and if we don't, then we can push, then, then we can push it off another week if we have to.
We would have to know then, we could do, no, we couldn't, we couldn't do our regular meeting, well, yeah, we could do the 23rd then, or what. So we're gonna do.
So what we, basically we can do now is continue it until Thursday.
Thursday.
They can let us know, meaning them being the Board of Appeals, whether or not their members can make it on that day, if their members can't make it.
Then we, then we have to show up and continue it again.
Show up and continue it, but we can also let the applicant know that they're not to come.
So.
Because I don't want the applicant to have to show back up and then sit here and find out, no, we're not, can't hear it.
March 12th.
So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing to March 12th at 6:00? Six thirty, six, at 6:30.
Okay, 6:30.
And that's the only thing that's gonna be on the agenda?
Correct, that's it.
Need a second?
Does that, wait, does that work for the applicant?
Should be here.
6:00 on Thursday?
6:30.
6:30?
We should include you in this.
Closing on my own property, hopefully I can make it for 6:30, yes, I'll be here.
Okay.
Rob?
Is there a second?
But Rob, you said you should.
I should be here.
Okay. 6:30.
Sure.
So it's a second, is there a second?
Rob, we need a second.
Sure, I'll second.
So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so it's continued to Thursday, March 12th at 6:30.
I know there were some questions about the plans that I had handed you, and scale and such, I did not know if you wanted to have a set of plans to.
No, we can't touch them until the 12th now, unfortunately.
6:30.
6:30. Apologize.
And for some.
We apologize.
And if for some reason we find out that the Board of Appeals doesn't have enough people to come that night, well, we'll let you know, so you don't have to show up.
Well, we have to post it.
And it'll be changed then to. It's still gonna be posted, right?
Tomorrow.
We'll, we'll continue that that day to our next meeting, which will be the 23rd.
March 12th.
Okay.
No sense in me even being here.
And that would be the only thing I would do.
Have a good night. You too. That's it.
Thank you.
So, so they don't need a super majority, I was.
The ZBA does, it's a special permit. Site plan, um.
Does not.
The, that does not.
Goes by.
So if we can't make it, that I'm gonna say you should.
Yes.
I have to scowl.
Yeah, nice.
We have one thing, one thing left on the agenda.
Huh?
We have one thing left on the agenda.
The discussion, or the.
Yep, unless you want to postpone it.
Those are mean.
But then he said to be reopened after the public hearing.
Sorry, I missed that part.
Recontinue.
Yeah, how convenient. Well, I think you closed the hearing, right?
We continued.
You continued the hearing, so, well, as far as the South Hadley Line Level Road extension of the industrial park, I think that's something we're all gonna talk about as we get ready with other things for.
Yeah, what's, what's our list to date for proposed zoning changes, do we have that?
Uh, I.
Or bylaw changes?
I don't know that there's anything.
I think I have like two things and I don't have it with me.
East Street? New Ludlow Road?
And whatever Heather may come back with.
Let's see, they were talking New Ludlow Road and, um. What, East Street, you're saying is the.
The old housing at the base.
Yeah.
And it's over into the.
Now, although, yeah, the master plan's something else, not to do, not having anything to do with this, this is discussion on extension of the industrial park, so now you're talking about proposed, or potential zoning bylaw changes, right?
Zoning changes.
The zoning bylaw changes, yeah.
The thing that's tough about East Street, there's still houses in those pockets, they're all gone.
We can, we can identify.
Yeah.
We can identify the certain areas.
Well, one side of East Street, there's nothing on there, but you could go the other side where.
So the first one is extending the industrial number one park zoning from the South Hadley Line to New Ludlow.
Yeah.
The next one is, you're calling it East Street?
Correct.
East Streets. Metro, is it Western Metropolitan?
Westover Metropolitan District, is that what it is?
I'll look it up. Rezoning, right?
They call it Southern Airport?
I don't think the people that.
Own the airport, own that part, or manage that.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, there's something different there.
It's not the federal government, though.
It's not the government, no.
No. Event, adding events.
Well, let's see what she comes up with.
Okay.
As a proposal.
And I had.
That's not, that's, we can't really say, that's more of a land use classic case change, not a.
Yeah, but you do it at the same time.
No, no, I know, so I think that might be a little easier.
So I asked Ken earlier if Heather could reach out to Ken, is she allowed to do that? With our approval, or?
Well, she can actually, I can reach out for questions.
She can reach out to whoever she wants to.
Right, I don't know if your office entertains things.
I would entertain it, I mean, obviously, I have, I know the context of the conversation.
Who's he gonna charge us, thank you.
Well, that's, that's, that's it, right, because we can't be authorizing that.
I mean, it.
It shouldn't be to us.
No, absolutely not.
Right.
Yeah, and I, and she probably can't afford that.
No, she can't, because then if she, if she's hiring you, then you're in conflict with each other.
That's right.
Right.
So, she'd be best off getting her own private consultant.
There, yeah, there, there could be a question about that.
Or.
Other than providing a process, there could be a question about, you know, a suggestion.
But in that case, she should ask the entire planning board, though.
Correct, I think.
Right.
I think based on your conversation today, if she were to come to the planning board with a succinct request to look at the zoning bylaw addressing that specific type of use, the planning board, you know, and I do have an example of that specific type of use, could elect to, you know, go through that public hearing process to address that.
Okay. One of the other things was increasing the size for oversized barns.
I brought, we're getting a lot of, like, this applicant here, he's building a barn over 1,200 square feet, I don't know what's up, 1,500, 2,000, whatever it is, we're getting a lot of these requests.
24, this will be 2,400.
2,400, so, I'm thinking maybe we should propose a change so that we're not dealing with these, it's.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's two acres or more, or five acres or more, they should be allowed to put a barn up without going through this process.
Right, great.
With a, you know, with a, with a higher threshold, say 2,500 square feet, or, there's another one, too, we talked about where it was, it was just over 1,200 square feet, including the second floor.
Or, there's another one, too, we talked about where it was, it was just over 1,200 square feet, including the second floor. So maybe we, we tweak that, where it's, the footprint can't be more than 2,000 square feet, or 2,500 square feet on five acres, you know. Some, some sort of formula like that.
Yeah.
It just, 1,200 square feet's not very, it's not very big.
But you got, like, so you can also do, you know, under X amount of square feet is allowed here, X minus 12, you know, this is allowed here for the set.
And that would be specific to like storage, right, assuming for-
Storage or farm, you know, farming?
Farm equipment, yeah. But not like an accessory dwelling unit? Like, okay, so you wouldn't, no one would be living there.
Although, I wouldn't be opposed to that. If you had five acres and you wanted to put an accessory building out there, if there's enough room for a septic system in a well, and if it's, and if it's owned by the same occupant.
Well, it does not just become a building, a house or something, a large garage.
It'd be an in-law apartment. You know, I wouldn't be opposed, I'm, I'm just saying, I wouldn't be opposed to that if you, if you had five-
When the time comes and-
It's, it's all gonna be owned by the same.
Until property line gets run down between the ex, the house and the-
And if, and if it meets our bylaws, so be it. I don't, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I wouldn't be opposed to presenting it to the town, anyway.
Okay, so are we done with the potential zoning bylaw changes?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Do we wanna do the open action items to get them off the list? And then we're done?
Sure.
Okay. This was myself and Jim create a letter to Greg Briggs regarding Dollar General retention basins and fencing. That is completed. And did you wanna mention anything on that, Jim?
They're looking at potentially making some changes, some engineering changes. I think they're trying to get permission from the state right now, but they are working on it. And I, I didn't bring them with me, but I did have copies of the letter that we sent to, code enforcement.
Okay. Obtain final billing numbers for Borrego Solar and Raymond Beaujolais for oversized barns. So one is done, the other one will be done March 23rd. Send planner, conservation agent, job description, comments to Kathy Leonard, Chris Martin. That was mine. That's done. And I had another one. Send the name of planning board representative for R2 to study to Kathy. Done. Submit planning board 2019 annual report submission. Done. Create response to select boards. July 15th letter. Did you sign, Jim? Again, contact GZA regarding sending a new letter and credentials for planning board to consider for approved peer review list.
I will, I actually did that a long time ago. But what I'll do is I'll follow up and then just send the board that correspondence. Yeah. Yeah, I, I think if they really want to, they would.
Yes, why are we wasting our time? If they, why even bother with a follow-up? It was sent, they haven't responded, so.
You wanna call it complete?
I don't have a problem with calling it.
We've got our, our part, right?
Right.
Okay, we'll call it complete. Off your list.
Until they come again, you know, and that may happen.
Okay. Ta-da.
We're not saying that they're not gonna be on the list, they just haven't responded to be put on the list.
And if someday they might send something in, then we start from there.
Can I bring something up? Has the board talked to anyone from Westover regarding the joint land use study that was done a couple years ago?
Nope.
Because I've been, I haven't been entertaining phone calls. However, um, there was a phone call that, I mean, I haven't entertained other than informing them that PVPC did a joint land use study. And the communities that are adjacent to the Westover, there was some sort of process. I don't know what that process was, because it happened a couple years ago. And then they were asking for information regarding Grand B. So I, you know, provided them the zoning map as well as the Westover. So their reps, because they were doing some sort of, um, review of that joint land use study. I think one of the big things that maybe your planner, or I can assist with in the future, is the, the correspondence with them. With regards to, they're, they're specifically looking, and I don't know if it, it's gonna affect Grand B at all, but to change some of the, there's a boundary, what they call the, there's so many acronyms, it's AICUZ. But it's regarding conflict and error. And some towns that are directly impacted have specific types of development within that boundary. I don't think where yours is located is in residential zone, so you're not looking to densify that. And that's specifically understanding what type of development is along, in that, within that boundary. So, but I think it's just something to be put on your purview.
Well, if we're gonna look at rezoning that, we should probably know what's gonna be allowed.
Right.
So if you could find out.
Yeah, I, I can, I can, I can show, I mean, it, it would be definite, I think that the concept is not to rezone it to increase the density, unless you had a specific, reason why you would be increasing the density, then that conversation wouldn't have to happen. Because what I shared with them was that, within that boundary, and I'll share the, with the board, what they said, me, is, is your residential zone. So it really was to address future development specific to increasing the heights of the buildings in there.
So it's the height they're concerned about?
It's height, yeah, and that was mainly it. And in other parts, South Hadley, for instance, they had just rezoned to increase density in that specific corridor. So there is conversation that's happening between-
So they have concerns, and would make sense, all high a building would be in that area.
Right.
But as well as density, too.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, where you have pretty much just open land, unless the, the board was looking at, you know, changing that to more dense development, where you have single-family homes in large parcels.
I don't, can we do residential there anymore, or can we, where do, how must have to be industrial?
Well, the, the land that the, that they purchased is under their control.
Right.
We're just rezoning. So if there's other land that has not been purchased by them and is still, and we rezone it.
No, we're rezoning their land as well.
Yeah, I was-
As well.
Right.
But there's other land there that falls within that, that, that area.
Stretch there?
Yeah, they thought it was, when that land was purchased, was because of-
The noise.
Noise a bit, no?
Noise a bit, and it couldn't be residential after that.
Correct. But, but since then, the, the, the area has, because of the, the different aircraft they have, that area's shrunk, correct?
Yeah, and I, I think the biggest thing is your future land use. So it's not necessarily addressing changes right now. It would be if the town, maybe in the master plan document says, we want development there, then the, the air force base should know that, that. And then a conversation between the town and the air force base could occur. So it's more looking into the future of where the town may develop. I think just looking at the map, looking at this boundary, which, again, I will share with the board just for context, because me explaining it is probably not helpful to you, because I don't know what's, you know, I, I can't tell you the streets that were part of this boundary. Is if, and looking quickly at the master plan, it didn't look like you were looking at development there, like commercial, or any development other than residential in that particular.
So, two questions. The first one is, should we have one, somebody from the Westover Development Metropolitan here to talk to the board?
I, I think that we should review what Ken is talking about first.
Yeah.
And then we develop questions to be able to ask Westover.
I think what I'll do is I'll share with you the material, because hearing that you aren't familiar with this joint land use study is concerning to me. In that the town should have been somewhat involved with the process through public hearings.
I'm pretty sure the, I'm guessing the select board got a copy. And I'm thinking we got a copy, but it's like the documents-
I think it was 2016 or 2017?
Documents, kind of big.
Yeah, it's a large document. So I, you know, I'm just sharing it with you. And the basis of understanding that the, Westover is looking at just kind of development plans from, 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 from the other abutting towns. And they did reach out to me, just because I was part of the regional group that is talking about development around the Westover. And so they were like, do you have a contact for Grand B? I said, I can try to address based on the study that was approved and, you know, talk to our GIS person to provide them maps. But you're gonna wanna reach out to the town in some fashion. And I, I directed it to the, um,
Look at, I mean, it's not, it's not-
And again, it's not a lot.
No, but it was, it was on our radar to do something, but anyway, it'd be nice if, if we had everything to consider first before-
Right. It's on our radar to, to address a question. It's not to do anything, it's to address future development. And, you know, I utilize the tools that the town has already adopted, which include the master plan and your zoning map and your zoning bylaws, to provide them information.
And speaking of the master plan, that's question number two. Are you a part of that?
I will be working with the town. I did send something to your town administrator, so I'm not sure where that request is at the moment.
Okay, so I would assume somebody from here would be involved. Planning board has to be involved.
Yeah, I would assume, especially if it is, if it changes zoning. So.
Well, the master plan is the responsibility of the planning board.
So, because the, the contact, and so maybe it's the planning board that reaches out to the town administrator. The contact person on that request is the, is the town administrator.
I think that's because the select board's the one that sent in the request for the assistance.
And that's fine. I mean, however that process moves forward, we do have until December.
That's gonna be coming up soon, especially if we got zoning bylaw changes.
Yeah, I mean, and, and it probably would be helpful to, to address those.
Well, yeah.
So when can you check with Chris?
I can ask Chris about that. What was the, what was the amount?
7,500.
So.
There was some, there was another request in there that was specific to looking at mixed-use development within a corridor and addressing the master plan. It wasn't clear whether or not it was an update to the master plan. Because if that's the case, the, the scope that I had proposed probably will change.
Yeah, I think it's more of an update, because that's what we were, that's what we were charged as from the select board, reminding us that, hey, it needs to be updated. And then they included it in with requests.
It's basically a cursory review.
Of your economic development section.
Correct, so that we qualify for grants. We have to do that periodically to qualify, to show that we're, we're being prudent.
Okay.
So Ken, your request to, Chris Martin was for contact information, or?
So the application, when it was submitted, was the contact person was Chris Martin. And that's why I sent the initial proposed scope based on that request.
Okay, so you're just waiting to go ahead?
To, to move forward. More than likely, it'll be working with the planning board and maybe some other committee members that the town administrator may include. It may, and it may happen outside of this particular process, or it may not. Happen, I mean, I guess at a planning board meeting versus a meeting of the economic development committee with a planning board member or two.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.